Call February 19th, Dixon County Commission, please dance this flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda as printed, any additions? I move we approve the agenda as printed.
Second.
Been moving to second, any discussion? Not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Consent agenda, minutes of the February 12th work session and regular meeting, wire payments of $4,862.72 and fund expenditures of $126,707.21.
May we approve the consent agenda?
Second. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Lynn, make your comments.
Really don't have too much. We do have a Kansas Association of Counties Board meeting that's going to be taking place next Friday, so I plan to attend that, and I'm sure with a lot of the legislative activity, we'll have some updates and probably be finding out, hopefully, good news, but that may be a little bit too optimistic. There also, we had a Central Kansas Mental Health Board meeting on Monday that I attended, and of course Sheila Diggs is the chairman of our group this year, and so anyway, everything seems to be going pretty smoothly over there. And I'm not sure, but this afternoon, Congressman Gilz Camp is, will be at the Eisenhower Presidential Library, I think it's just going to be the meeting room by the visitor center, and so if my schedule allows me to get away, I'm going to try to get away for that. And the only other thing coming up, on the 25th, there's a sesquicentennial meeting for the Chisholm Trail, and I think they're just looking to get some input and maybe float some ideas, and I plan to attend that, that particular evening, so, and I think all of us are invited to it if it works for our schedule. And that's all I have.
Yeah, yesterday was the North Central Kansas Region Juvenile Detention Meeting that we have every month over Jackson City, and we was, presented the audit for 2014, and I might mention, it was, when we did our budget, we wasn't sure on some of those costs when Slayton County came in, and some of the things that we ran over a little bit on was, of course, the budget and workers' comp and payroll was higher because we ended up having to hire some extra staff, and, but anyway, it wasn't bad, we just ran over $500. But on the revenue side, we gained about $54,000 on the revenue side, so I guess, when you look at that way, we ended up gaining about $50,000, or close to $54,000 that we got to carry over as reserve funds, so, you know, I think that kind of shows that we, well, having Slayton County in the long run financially is going to help us, and so we were pleased with the financial report. We've kind of been going around and around with KDG over there, and the way we run the facility over there is, we expect the juveniles to have some discipline in our facility and not, not, it seemed like the ones we get in there haven't had a lot of discipline, so that's about the only place they ever had any discipline, and so, they had had a, I guess, they came in to do a survey or something, and the lady that did the survey had written us up on some things, and so then they had a follow-up with, I guess this last week, we had a follow-up with another person from KDG, and they thought that everything was just fine, so we kind of was, conflict between what was written up and what. So now we, we are going to go down and just have a meeting with the KDG people that I'll see next Friday, a week from tomorrow, and just, we just feel like we need to, and we thought we, they'd done this a couple of years ago, that they'd gone down to talk to them, and we kind of told them how we've run the facility and the things that we did, and they, they wanted some extra documentation, which we had done, we felt like we were following everything that they'd told us two years ago. Well, now they're saying, after they came in and did this inspection, that, you know, that they wrote us up on these things, that we thought we had approval to do, so now we're going to go back to them, visit with them again, and I think we will get it straightened out, that the person that came to do the survey was a little over anxious, and like I say, they maybe didn't quite understand what, what we had worked out ahead of time, and so we think it's, we're just more or less going there to support Sean and tell him that we're backing the policies that he's put in, that we've put in place, and we're not doing anything to abuse the kids, and some of the things we do, it's for the safety of the kids also, and so we've not had an instance in the 20 years that facility's run, and I think that's a remarkable, remarkable record, that we have not had a kid injured or a staff person injured in, in the 20 years that it's ran, and I think it's because of the way we run the facility, and, you know, if a kid is unruly, you know, they, they do get, get isolated in their cell for a while until they're calmed down, and we feel like that they're, can come back out, deal with, and socialize with the rest of people. So that was the main thing that we've been going on down there, but we think that once we go down and visit with them again, we'll probably get, get that straightened out with them. So like I say, if either one, you want to look at this financial report I brought with me, the, I think most of us all attended the school conservation last week, and it was, they get a lot of school kids involved in that with the poster contest, and I think it's fun for the kids and also a learning process for them that, what conservation means, and so they had big, always have a big turnout, there's parents with kids there to get their awards. Farm Bear Meeting is denied, and I plan to attend that, and also I, I maybe will try to go down and listen to Gilz Camp this afternoon.
Thank you, Vern. Yeah, I'd like to reiterate, the school conservation banquet, I thought Jim Carroll and Randy Rogers done an excellent job with their entertainment, they did a real good job at our work session, Leah Hearn was in, and there's three bills, two of them that are going to affect the county or the vehicle registration, which is going to be how you receive your registration, it was supposed to be on a postcard, that's going to create some work for us, Steph. Then there's also a deal for registration for fees for vehicles to increase that registration fee. Our GIS lady was in, Sherri Massey, gave an update on the work she's been doing, and one of the big projects, the Abilene Cemetery has approached her about GISing that. Also, another deal is road and bridge map that people go out and look at and see where we're working, and then the other will be internally, that could be used for permits between the zoning and planning and environmental services. Also, I did attend the kickoff meeting for the Dixon County Economic Development Corporation Tuesday evening. They officially adopted their bylaws, so they are organized now. Doug, do you have anything?
No, no, but thank you.
So we have no presentation of public proclamations, we'll have to wait till 11:15 for a public hearing, so Brad, do you want to start?
Sure, I can finish here, a couple minutes ago I walked today. I've set March 5th as the annual meeting for the Public Building Commission during this meeting, we sent notices out to the other board members, we'll do as we have in the past, they can even call in on conference call, they can attend and we'll get that, get that knocked out. Craig had received, I think, an email from a gentleman who lives in Elmo, who was requesting to vacate a couple of alleys, public right-of-way between several parcels that he owns, and I did get that petition sent out to him that he could fill out, basically just sign and send back to us, and we'll process that if he, if he wants to do that, so.
Those were some that we had talked about earlier, weren't they?
That is some, that kind of, first was that project we talked about a year or two ago, trying to get some of that cleaned up, so, and it's good to see that somebody's bought some of those parcels and can, is interested in doing that, so.
So that, that would just go back on the tax roll that it was turned over to?
It would enlarge that parcel, it would go back on the tax rolls, and there wouldn't be any public right-of-way through those. One's an alley, one's a street that was never developed, so, in Banner City, Elmo is actually technically Banner City. Let's see, we talked about topics with the city meetings, meeting with the city on the 11th, we'll also provide you a draft on the, for the Agenda of Township Day on the 23rd of March, we'll kind of tweak that a little bit, and about the first of the month, I'll send it out to the township board members, so. We reserved all four of you to attend the meeting in Salina on the 3rd, I'll be good to go there, and then just a reminder to Craig that I'll be going next week, so.
Going back to the Township Day.
Yep.
First person is going to be here for?
Yeah, I'll be there, yes.
Does he want to address the state rating of KDOT banks, or is that going to be, not, that's probably brought up, or, I should say, how it's going to affect the work that's going to be done in Dixon County, I guess.
Yeah, I'm sure they probably will. Our request to him was just give an update on, on projects coming up in 2015 in our county, but I'm sure that that's going to be part of that update, because he may or may not know how it's going to affect at this point. Yeah? So, I think we've got a pretty good evening lined up, should be beneficial to township board members. That's all. Janil will sit in for me next week, so if you need something.
Okay. While we've got time, I did get a letter from, or an email from Doug McKenney about the, whichever I'm sure everybody's heard about, is the change of the land use value that the state is wanting to do, and it's going, worst case scenario would be 400% raise in the value of the land, that's how they're going to.
On ag land.
Ag land, yes. Reading through it, it's something that was brought up, I, the governor said he'd veto if it didn't come up, so, but it's one of those deals that's in, in the wind now, so it'll probably be ongoing for the next, until something is changed, I would say.
Is KCG going to take a stand on that, or?
Surely will, I haven't heard anything from them yet.
Yeah, no, there was nothing coming from KCG, this was from Doug McKenney.
From what Doug's email.
Yeah, he got it too, yeah.
He met personally with the governor.
Governor for a few minutes.
As well as several of the legislators, and there was nobody there that was supporting it, except a young gentleman from Leewood that introduced it, so, and he had introduced it in the last session, as you know, it's been going where.
But it's got more wheels on it, more traction this year, just.
Well, what he's proposing is, is, I mean, I guess that'd be good work, because it makes no sense to take, for businesses to take all the income tax relief for all the businesses and then just dump it all onto the farm ground, that, that doesn't seem like that would be, would make sense, that their policy is to relieve taxes on, on all businesses and then just, then just triple the taxes on the farm ground to make up business, you know, it's somewhere in moderation, I'm sure we'd be seeing other bills, but to build it, that's presented is not.
You're going to be one of the presenters.
That one's on moderation.
That's not feasible, what.
I got your, I got your, you're top.
We might need some more chairs.
Well, I don't think we're going to be able to get any more, we've brought in a few more already, we could get some on the side.
Yeah.
There's some folding chairs out in the hallway.
Get a couple, three more.
How many more we got out there?
Can you open the door? Can they, have a chair there, John, where they can see in, and then we'll just have a handle on it.
Please guys, pick that up.
While everybody's signing in, we call the public hearing on the bridges, the road and the water. What we're going to plan on doing is, John and Brad, we're going to give kind of an overview and the, how we got to this place, and then we'll have public comment, which there's going to be a lot, I've got about 12 emails and stuff, so Brad, do you want to go ahead and start?
Yes, welcome everyone this morning, we've got a good turnout, obviously indicates that we've got a lot of interest in these two bridges, so I'll just take a couple of minutes to give a little background, we have two bridges in question, at 2845 Quail and 3200 Oat, were inspected the last year, and the results of those inspections came back with a zero waiting, which causes us to close the bridge because of its condition, so. There are locations where we felt, the commission felt like we wanted to get the public's opinion on what the outcome and future of these are, so with that, I've asked the county engineer, John Goff, to put together some information, background on this and some options, and at this point, I'll turn it over to John, so.
Just kind of to get started, we all here know how important it is to have bridges, and we all are looking at what obstacles do we have to overcome to get bridges put back into place, and that was the direction that we headed with this information. It is a fairly extensive report, what I'd like to do is go through it from front to back, so that you see and know all of the information that is there, then we'll go back through it a second time and answer questions as we go along, that way you can see it and have the opportunity to see how the package interacts together. Next slide, please. That is the bridge at 2845 Quail, next. 3200 Oat, you can see that they're trust bridges, and that they're old. Federal requirements, bridge inspection required by the law, safety, and the feds are saying Kansas local bridges, not the state bridges on the state highway, but local bridges, that means county, city, and township bridges that are out there are not being inspected to the state, to the federal satisfaction, so, next. Feds are making a big deal out of this, I mean a big deal, next. What the feds are saying is, for bridge inspection, state, we're going to tell you what to do. Next. And then what the feds are saying is, state, we're going to tell you that you're responsible to tell the county and the township, and in most cases the cities, but for our purposes today, the counties and the township, this is what you're going to do, and this is how it's going to be, and if you don't do it, next, we're going to decrease or stop your funding. Now folks, you might think that only applies to road and bridge money, but they have the right to stop it for everything else that comes into the county. The question is, will they? Probably not, but that's the threat, they even go back to the state and say, state, if you don't do this, there's a possibility we'll withhold some of your funds to the state. And, you might as well know it now, because of these inspections, there's more bridges, closings coming, so this is a bigger deal than just these two bridges, next. We have 300 bridges and 1,350 plus county coverts, those are just smaller than bridges, next. These are the inspections that are required of the bridges, a regular inspection, that's every two years, a load rating, they say that's as needed, if you go out there and do something on the bridge, then you have to have another load rating, in other words, how much will it, weight will it take. A washout, that's a scour, or a flood problem that may wash something out, fracture critical, we're going to talk about those here in just a minute, and then special inspections, and there's two of those kinds of inspections presently, they're working on a third one that they're going to impose on us. Next, fracture critical, that means one failed member, it's likely that that bridge will collapse, and we're going to show you a picture of that in just a minute, next. An example is the Minnesota Interstate Bridge that failed six or seven years ago, I'm sure that that was in the news enough that you folks all heard about it, but that was a fracture critical failure, one piece failed and the thing came down. This isn't just Dickinson County, this is every county in the state. An example of that is Shawnee County on January the 29th, two weeks ago, was told that their bridge across the Kansas River to the tune of $25 million was fracture critical, and they lowered the weight rating on that one to three tons. That is a major access in and out of some of the cities in Shawnee County. There is a fracture critical bridge, it is the trust that you saw, this was the picture, that pin right there holds this piece, this one, this one, and the beam underneath, all together. If that pin fails, all of that comes apart, and the bridge has the potential to go down. If this piece fails, all of a sudden, it has the potential, this one or this one, any of those pieces, there are additional pieces under fracture critical that could fail, that could cause it to go down, this is just an illustration of what they're talking about for fracture critical. Next, we have seven fracture critical bridges in Dickinson County, next. Every year, up to that amount of money, no, we only have one that'll probably be at that top range, and we'll talk about those prices here in just a minute. Next, these are the three that we closed just recently because of these inspections that came in, and the two we're talking about today are just those two, and we'll get to those details here in just a minute. Next, the other four out of seven, folks, weight limits were lowered on 1900 Avenue, just below Brown's Park, and the Boy Scout is a big trust bridge, that one went from 14.
14 times a six.
To six tons, and it was, the problem was identical to the one in Minnesota. Next, for these bridges, they were constructed about 1905, at the time they were built, they were state of the art, matter of fact, you could go to the Sears and Roebuck catalog, look it up and pick out, this is the one we want, and in a lot of cases, that's what happened. The one, both of these were designated as historic, that means in some cases, it is difficult to demolish them. Presently, the one at 2845 Quail has been approved for being demolished if, if it's chosen to do that. The one at 3200 Oat, these county commissioners have the right to overturn that designation. Designed for horse and buggy, they're 100 years old, rust is beginning to get to them, next. Because of what they found, the fed required that it be closed, next. This is another one of the bridges, this was on 1750 Avenue, which is down here, and this little short video will show you what happens when one is removed. For right now, if you'll notice, that is low right there, it's a sag, that meant that there was a lot of heavy weights with it across that, and it held them up, but it was still saggy. The reason this one's coming down is because one of those pins was broken. Okay, while you're watching, I want you to take note of this column and pier that's right here, looks nice and solid, doesn't it? Folks, this one is, but you see that one over there? Soon as they got that thing down, that other one fell over, the bridge was holding it up, apparently it was undermined, or there was some problem with it. Right now, it's still laying there in the creek, it hasn't been removed yet, anybody Okay, what options do we have at Quail and 3200? And the options are close and/or abandon, remove maybe, the other option is replace. What choices are there? We can put a modern bridge in there, big one, low water crossing, those are possibilities for replacement, I see a couple of heads shaking, we'll talk about historic here in a minute. Costs for a modern one in that location, three quarters to a million dollars, low water, 350 to 500,000. And the township costs, there's going to be costs for the township. Channel maintenance and road maintenance are in the law right now, and it's up to the townships to take care of and pay for that. All-weather road, if we go through this process, there'll be permits and things like that, and the question is, will the township need to build that as an all-weather road? There is the likelihood that yes, and that would be a township cost. Now, why so expensive? First off, it's Chapman Creek, that's a large drainage area, it starts in Ottawa County. Next, floodplain conditions, that floodplain is about a mile wide, water spreads out for a mile, runs fast, there are problems there with that, potential washout. Next are the three things that are going to be a problem, and that is the safety rules that we have to abide by, the environmental rules that have been put into place since the 70s, permit approvals. Now, how do these get enforced by this one right here? When we apply for the permits, they're checking all of those things. Next. Next. The biggie, reason it's so expensive, current bid prices. And prices are going up. Last fall, we bid a repair in Union Township. It was washed out. I do not have a picture of that with me and we put riprap back under it. It was washed out to the tune of six or eight feet under that abutment. The price we had proposed for that was 160,000 and it came in at 200. Yes, we went ahead and did that. It's either that or the same thing we have here, a million dollar bridge replacement. Part of that cost is the township cost, so they're going to share in that 200,000 dollars. Recently, earlier, this month, we bid a bridge at 3465 Sage. Again, Martin's guys could have built it for about 100, but it was required to get the federal money or the state money for it, that it be for a contractor. So we estimated it at 160. The low bid on it was 202. The high bid was 350. Prices are going up, folks, and I've got more stories like that if you want. Usage at these locations, presently it's relatively remote, minimal traffic. Next. But that small amount of traffic is important to the current landowners. Next. The landowners have access by other means, although a long way around. Potentially slow-moving ag vehicles on high-speed pavement. Some people feel like that there is a safety issue with that. So we recognize, the reason we need to have something here is to take care of some of these things. All right. Anytime we get into one of these, somebody says, well, can't we do just enough to get that back open for a pickup? So we're going to explore that for these two bridges. The first thing that was said to me, if you get it open enough for a pickup, the semis will use it. Folks, just look, it is a fact. 105 years old, significant deterioration. 105-year-old vehicle, light duty, horse and buggy was what those things were designed for. Next. Legal capacity in today's world is three tons. So we have to get at least up to three tons. 3200 note, this is the underside, this is also the underside. Take note of these columns right here that are holding that span up. There's one right out here, just outside, that extends and is, there's a significant washout there. The question is, is that column the first thing that's going to buckle? In this case, you can see back in underneath there what problems there are. You can see the drift that is there. Next. Here's drift also. Next. This happened because the water washed out a big cottonwood tree. Cottonwood tree came down on that bridge. Bid it significantly. And then, the landowner went in, took that tree down. When they went back inspected it, his taking the tree down caused more damage to that bridge. This is the fix to get the thing back lined up and running. Next. The drift that comes down causes these beams, they hit and hook and move those beams out of the way. This one was pushed over here. They put it back in place, but they had to put a brace against it to keep it there so it was lined up where it belonged. In addition to that, although it's difficult to see here, these are beams in this location, but that one out there's not a beam. It's half a beam. It's just a channel iron. Now, next. This is the underside where the beams are. And you'll notice again, we've got the steel holding up this in the middle, but look back there, you've got wood pilings. We'll take a closer look at those in just a minute. That's the abutment. Next. This is the caisson that holds up the truss bridge. You can see the rusted-out area right here. That's letting water inside. That's where they welded it together at the time they did it. Also take note that at least in this time period, there was that much scour. The question with one of these is, where's the bottom of that? What's the foundation under it? Was there dirt out here from the time they put it in? We'll get to that question. Next. This is a caisson. It's hard to see with the picture, but there's how they put those things together. They were lapped and riveted and those rivets have rusted out, letting water inside. That is filled with concrete. Next. You can see the concrete in there, but you can see how it's been gouged. Next. This is one of those wood piling under that abutment that I pointed out a minute ago. There are four of them. Two of them look like that. I'll show you the other one in a minute. And the two middle ones? What is the condition of them? Are they hollow in the middle so you can't see it? We don't know. Next. There's the other one. Something like half of that is gone, plus the entire column in the middle of the wood that is there. Next. Now, once we've looked and examined all of these pieces, the next question is, what's the weakest link? We've got to get that weakest link up so we can get that three tons on there. This is a four-sprand bridge. It's 140 feet long and there's an 80-foot truss in the middle of it. The truss capacity itself is 10 ton. That was standard in 1905. It is less now because there's evidence of accidents out there and pieces have been bent and broken. The floor beam, that's the piece in the picture I showed you that was sagging like that. That's the piece that holds everything up. The capacity of these are four ton. That's as if it was new. It is rusted and we do have some issues with it. Truss stringers, that's the piece that's set on the floor beams. The piece above that is the wood deck. But these are the pieces that hold up the wood deck. Their capacity is three ton. They are rusty and you remember what I said about, we have a half a beam on the edges? We can say that those folks in 1905 were exceedingly cost-effective because they got to the three tons. Or we can say, the floor beam was four tons and they cut corners. They didn't get up to the rest of the quality of the rest of the structure. Take your pick how you want to say that. But the fact of the matter is, three tons. Two approach spans, 2.7 tons. One approach span, less than a ton. You know about the wood deck? The piling, I showed you those. Caissons, those you've seen. The foundations and depths, unknown. How much scour is there in that creek? Next picture. I hate to show this one, but folks, that's what the scour is in Chapman Creek, just a little ways downstream. Yes, this has been repaired. At one point, the dirt was that deep on that column. Next. All right. To try to get something in there that's three tons, I said, assume the caissons, the truss, and the floor beams are acceptable. I'm not sure I want to do that, but for purposes of this discussion, that's what I said, let's try. Next. That means we're replacing all the stringers in the deck, but that means also we're putting additional weight on the pilings and caissons and weight on the floor beams and the truss. Floor beam capacity decreases to less than three tons. It was four. You put that extra dead load weight on there, you're likely in this category. The truss decreases, we don't know where until you get that load rating, but it goes from 10 down to something. The piling capacity? The caisson foundations, will the caisson shift or tilt? Are they undermined because of the scour that is there next to them? Costs. How many people have started a rehab in your bathroom and as soon as you got, the wall tore, well, we need to do this and this and this? That's kind of the situation here with this one. But if you just upgrade the entire deck from one end to the other, putting those added loads on there, 200 to 300,000 dollars. That's what it's going to cost us to get a contractor in here. The funds are not in any projected budget that we have here at the county. Next. Plus, even if we do that, we've got a $5,000 to $15,000 per year inspection cost. That hasn't been determined yet, but it, these are not as big as the one south of Brown's Park. Next. Future closure for some weak link deficiency. Folks, it's going to get another one of these inspections right here. And when those folks come, what are they going to find that we didn't fix? Or maybe my acceptable assumptions are wrong. Next. And after a few years, inspection cost would fund a new bridge. Next. County budget. Next. For 2019, the dollars available in the county budget for road and bridge maintenance materials is less than $2 million. You remember what a new bridge costs? Next. The planned, for the planned projects, the materials that we're proposing is 2.3 million. Now, these folks right here, and the law says, we can't exceed the 2 million. So something has got to give, right now, not including either of these bridges. We don't have enough money to do the projects that are proposed out there. Which exact ones we're going to do, we don't know yet. We're still waiting on some bids. Next. We do have the road and bridge sales tax at the tune of about a million dollars a year. Primarily when we went out and visited with you folks to vote for that. Deferred maintenance for the majority of the people. And I've got the pictures and things here where we talked about that when we were out there. Mitigate inflation. Graph is like this and we're filling in the inflation cost. The four bridges across the Smoky Hill River, there are six bridges that get us across the Smoky Hill River. Two of them are state and four of them are ours. And at the time we were out, we showed you the pictures of those that are beginning to come apart. If we don't start now looking out for those, those bridges are going to go down and get closed. Pavement safety markings, the yellow stripes and the white stripes. That has been a big deal. We've had front-page news about, please get those done. And then safety paving overlays on high-traffic roads, the same way when we begin to get these things. The question then becomes, where's the balance? But at the time, these are the things that that was identified to go for. Next. Potential funding. Does KDOT have any money? Any more federal money that we can get for this? Maybe. Replacement only if we go for KDOT funding. They will only allow us to replace it. No low-water bridges. They won't put money into that. If they fund it, 70% of the cost. So take a million dollars, 70%. Next. There's our share. Again, that's not in the budget. That's not part of that less than 2 million dollars we have to spend on projects throughout the year. Township costs are not covered on the federal project. Next. What's the chances of the feds and the state funding this bridge? We've got about a 65% chance or about two out of three chance that the state will fund it. But if they do, it's at least a two-year wait to go through all of the process. Remember the environmental and the safety rules and the permits? It takes at least that long to get this just to where we're ready to start building. So it's going to set there closed for two years. And if they don't fund it the first year and push it back a year, then it's going to set three years until we get it. The second year, your chance of getting funded is closer to 95%. Historic funding. That money will return the bridge safety to the year of the design, which was a horse and buggy. But it puts the bridge on display, but it doesn't fund access costs, maintenance costs, or operating costs for that historic location. It won't get it up to enough to use. And throughout the United States, truss rehab has usually not been economically feasible. Most places you'll find, if they had a truss, they took it down and put in a modern bridge if they needed a bridge. Alternates. Close for the foreseeable future and you can see the last word underneath it. There are some scenarios where, yep, need a bridge down there. But as long as it's rural and remote and there's no reason for through-traffic, indefinitely might be a long time. Next. Vacate the road. Do away with it. The township doesn't have a right to be there. There is no road left at all. We may or may not remove the bridge. The landowners would then own a private bridge if we left it there. So far, landowners are not required to follow the laws that we are. The landowners can erect whatever crossing they desire, but beware, the rules are beginning to change and they're beginning to apply them to the landowners. Hasn't got here yet. How long, I don't know. But the feelings are out there and they're beginning to work on it. Next. Vacating is not usually a good idea as reacquisition in the future is usually expensive. You can vacate it now, but if some conservancy agency bought the land down there and says, we want to have sightseeing down here, we need to have the bridge, we need to have the road, then we'd have to go back and pay for that road right away to get it put back in there. There's other scenarios where that may happen. I can't guess what they would be. But there have been occasions where vacating was a good idea and 20 years later, it wasn't such a good idea. Next. Action. No matter what action is taken, something's not being maintained. If the money is spent in this location, then we may not be doing something on Old Forty or we may not be taking care of bridges across the Smoky Hill River. There's only so much money. Situation continues to get worse. I just said it in different words. Folks, that's the end of what I had to present to these folks. They've suffered through it now a couple of times and heard it. Brad, if we can, why don't we back up to the front end? And we're ready to ask the questions. They have seen what's up here. We can begin to go through a slide at a time. If I was sitting here and heard all of that, I'd need that slide to remember what my question Next. 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 Let's start there. What questions do we have on this, if any?
Surely there's got to be some questions. Or if you want to make, any other way you want to do it. Questions about either bridge specifically. I, the commission's... I, the commission's, the Wilson Bridge, the commission has no intention of removing it. And I've got, I could read the emails. I've got about 10 of them. That they don't want to see it being left as an historical bridge. Any ideas how we could address that issue? Whatever. So. I don't think you overwhelmed them, John, but...
I'm quite willing to go sit down.
Any questions for John?
On any of what we've had?
Yeah, I'm George Poland, and my brother and I have farmway on both sides of Quail Road and both sides of the creek. And we irrigate on both sides, and so access is critical for that. I talked to Gary County, and they've got some programs that they've got cost share on low-water crossings. And I can't, there's, there's two programs that I think I understood they're fairly new. One's the federal off-system bridge program. And then the one that I think they got cost share on was the Kansas local bridge improvement program. And they, they put a crossing in on the Lower McDowell Creek, just off, just below Interstate. And I understand right there, cost, the county cost is about $60,000. And one of your slides up there said, KDOT couldn't get federal money. And I understand this is a Kansas, or state...
There are two different programs that you talked about there. And for those small, little ones that are less than 50 feet, the state's willing to do that. But once you get up to these big ones, they're not. But yes, Gary County did get those. I am aware of it.
So that's too big a drainage to put a low-water crossing in? You mentioned a low-water crossing.
It's possible. All of the $350,000 to $500,000 would come out of the county cost.
The way I understand it, the, the state requires us to meet certain criteria for the county, for the government to put money in. It's not like we can go in and, you know, put a couple tubes in. We have to meet certain specifications to put in a low-water crossing. Was 100 CFS the minimum? Yeah, I don't quote me either.
Don't want to put that on. What I would like to say is, that pro, one of those programs you talked about, the maximum amount of money out of that's $120,000. So if you take 350,000 or 500,000, less the 120,000, then that's how much would come out of our pocket. If we can even get them to agree to it.
I might add a little bit. Florence...
Whitebread?
Whitebread was, I was at a commission meeting with her yesterday, and, and I asked her about the low-water crossing bridge. And the reason they got that one approved is because Interstate 70, when it went through, it cut off the route that they normally could take to get around there. So they had some special circumstances, I might say...
That's right.
That added to their persuasion to get the state to help them with that low-water crossing. That's what she told me yesterday.
There, there's some other issues getting out, too, with grain, those getting out to 18, approach on 18, going north on Quail's, not real safe to be over there and stopping for traffic. So access out to the south would help, help us a great deal. And it's, I think, over six miles around now, just to get from one side of the creek to the other to maintain irrigation. Even, even keeping it open for a car and pickup traffic would help us a great deal.
Any other comments?
Yeah, Craig? Paul, Dickinson County Fire District, Fire Chief. I realize you have a lot on your plate here to deal with as far as funding. And I think some of your previous commissioners, who you filled their seats for, should be held accountable for the lack of foresight in seeing that funding has been available to maintain these bridges. Dickinson County Fire District has the lowest insurance classification of any fire district in Dickinson County. And a good share of that lies upon the fact that we have to have all under roads to be able to traverse to supply that good insurance rating. We've saved many of our constituents many thousands of dollars in fire insurance premiums. But Craig, you being a resident of that area up there, know how convoluted some of that road system is. And the lack of through roads going through, like 28 and 2900. It makes it very difficult, as it is for us, to access, and more so grass fires in that area than structure fires. But it's a concern of our fire district, any road that gets closed. You know, remember years ago, this same situation was visited after 1993, and the bridge over the Smoky Hill River, the only crossing between Enterprise and Chapman. That has had a devastating effect on our fire district and the fact that we really have to plan out a response, depending on what side of the river the fire's on. We're getting into this situation up in this area on the Quail Road Bridge, and I realize that the other one is out of our district up in Sherman and Frager Hills firefighting territory, but we back them up on a lot. And these do have adverse effects on public safety and firefighting. The good thing for grass fire season, if you were going to have a low-water crossing, that wouldn't be an issue for us. But it would not help for the structural ratings in that area. It'd have to be a modern bridge in order to handle, because our biggest truck's 68,000 pounds. And so there's quite a size difference, but do know and keep in the back of your mind, when you weigh out the, the cost versus benefit on this, is it isn't just a matter, it's, oh, there's two or three homes in this area that are going to be affected. It'll affect everybody within a several-mile radius of that, that may not make them eligible for the ISO Class 6 fire protection classification. So I just wanted to make sure that you keep that forefront when you're thinking about your decisions on this. And I would hope that, you know, when passing the road and bridge sales tax, that you spend the, spend it very wisely, but stay very proactive. You have your results of all your inspections, you know what's lying ahead of you, and you know there's going to be a lot more of this in the county that's going to be faced. The public also needs to be made aware of that, so they're not crucifying you for having to take these actions. But the thing is, I think that there should have been about 30 years ago, a lot more proactive approach on this, instead of relying, saying the federal government's going to bail us out. If we can't take care of ourselves, who's going to? So, you know, it has to start at the grassroots. But please keep that into consideration in your deliberations on what you're going to do on these bridges, because it can have a rather dramatic impact on what our constituents in the fire protection area pay for fire insurance.
John, since he brought up that point, do you, what do you anticipate in the next decade as far as possible bridge closures? Is that a fair question, or is I'm asking?
Well, I would like to address that differently. Every time we have an inspection, we have a chance of a bridge closer. Some inspections are every year, some inspections are every two years. Every time we have bridge inspections, there's something that Martin's crews go out and work on. We are doing our best to keep everything open that we can right now. Partly, so that Paul knows, in the few years that I've been here, we did, we have set up a long-range bridge program. Presently, with KDOT and federal money, we have a five-bridge program scheduled out in front of us. But the money that comes in, we'll pay for about one bridge every five years. So with those five years, the last one right now, the way we've got things scheduled as best we can, is scheduled at about 2030. Because we've already done one, and we've got another plan on another one, we're trying to find ways. As we said here today, what we're trying to do is find out what obstacles we have to overcome to take care of this situation. But exactly what you're talking about, we looked at and says, this is the best we can do. Those bridges are on county roads. We just bid one down here on 1900 Avenue, over by Eden Road recently. We'll wind up spending $700,000 on that one, of which 450 comes from the feds. Yeah. Excuse I say, is laundered through the state to us.
Well, and on the county's defense here, I don't think that many of the people realize the asset that we have in our road and bridge department, that there's very few counties that will build some of the structures that Dickinson County does do, and save, you know, better use of, of the dollar in that fact. But there again, my favorite saying's always been, the federal government reserves the right to move the goalpost after the ball's been kicked. They keep changing these things, and, you know, and after hearing with many of the townships, you know, about passing on the responsibility of the smaller structures back down to the townships. You know, that, that's the thing, is where 30 years ago is, is where I think the mistake started. The commissions back then didn't have the foresight to be doing what's going on now. And it isn't anything, I think, that anybody in this room that's sitting on the commission now or administration-wise can be held responsible for. This is something that the, the previous commission should have been keeping their finger on, better, you know. They were not as frequent of inspections back then. But that should have been the roadmap to the future of what one and how to prioritize them.
In support of that, I've done the research on why the townships are responsible for those smaller structures. And I think the folks that made that were in Topeka. It's the Kansas State Legislature, and it was done in the 19-teens. Those were decisions made then of who's responsible for what. So if you want to get those changed, you need to be visiting with your representatives to the Kansas Legislature. And I just provide that for you.
Well, the whole thing, it doesn't matter who's responsible for it, all going to end up paying for it, one way or another, it's...
Yeah, I might mention that Martin, the last, say, three years or so, has really stepped up, replacing the smaller structures that the county's been able to build themselves, and putting back steel structures that replaced a lot of the wood structures. And even some of the old concrete, smaller structures, we found out had really deteriorated. And some of those, we've been able to put culverts in, and, and that saves us quite a bit of money compared to building a bridge, and it's so much faster. And, but, you know, we've been about 20, 20 of those structures a year that Martin's crew's been able to do. So, you know, we're gaining on the smaller structures because of us being able to handle that ourself. But these bigger bridges, you know, are just out of our capability of, of doing. So it's kind of the mercy of the contractors, and it seems like the price that it costs to replace them now is just really skyrocketing. So it's, like I say, it, it's a real issue of just trying to keep up even the smaller ones that we know that we, we could handle them internally. It's just a matter of getting the, the work done and...
You know, Paul, when we went out and, when we went out and looked, and there was 1,350 of them before this last decade, I don't think anybody even inventoried them, or whatever, or knew how bad a shape things were. And we have started to have, I agreed to the past, I think, 30 years ago, they should have had it started in inventory and would have kept up a much better pace and have been worked, you know, handled. As far as the budget goes, we, you know, I think we will try to do as many as possibly can be built in the best way. Average in 20 a year, we're still never going to see it. To get all the ones that have failed the, so our inspection, our personal inspection and the small ones, even at 20 a year, we'll never catch up for a long time.
Question on a different issue. We're here today to decide what needs to be done with these two. Anybody else have any comments?
Well, if you don't mind, I mean...
Yes, sir.
I'm just a landowner, you know, just going down Quail and 18. The one thing we all need to keep in mind, though, as Mr. Poland was saying about that access on the K18, there's already one cross there. We've all drove by, we've all seen it.
Oh, you're talking about, 2,900 now? Yeah. That's a different issue than this.
I know, the young folks working around here, but it's because of that.
Yeah, yeah, oh, I know. I, I live, I live down the road.
I mean, if we end up closing that bridge, I mean, Mr. Poland, he's got a very nice outfit, but he's got some big and whip.
Yeah.
And it's going, it's going to cause him, you know, it's liable to cause another issue just like that...
Right.
...which we don't want.
And the historic bridge, Wilson Bridge, the county has no intention of doing anything with it, just depending on how we want to try to maintain it and stuff. And that'd be up to the township, if they want to do anything down there to, I don't, can't see that the township has the money to gravel it, just to have gravel down to, to look at it when it's wet, but that'll be their decision. Any other comments before we close the hearing? Clark, do you want to go ahead? Yes, yes, for sure.
Would you like to testify, like?
Yes, yeah, if you want, yeah. I can read it with you.
I never follow my notes, Frank.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. I have a few comments I want to make. Did provide some information in advance. I'm Clark Guthrie.
Yeah.
And I appreciate the opportunity to be here today.
Go ahead, I've got a topic.
I'm here to support Dickinson County's continuing commitment that it originally made in the 1950s, preserve the historic Wilson Bridge. And that was a commitment that was reaffirmed in 2008, 2009. And now really ask this body to continue to support that preservation commitment by maintaining the historic Wilson Bridge with a three, three-ton weight limit. As Paul said, this was a previous commission that filed its submission to request that the Wilson Bridge be placed on the state historic register and the federal historic register. And so I provided you a copy with that filing that this county has submitted that resulted in those designations. Do have a few comments, but before I do, I would like to supplement a couple of John's remarks. And I know he was in a conversational mode, but there are a couple of things that maybe should be verified from his testimony. First, I think one of the lesser-known decisions from the Supreme Court in the Citizens United case was, the federal government can no longer hold funds for purposes other than its original intent. So that might be something you'd look into. Second is the result of a conversation I had with Mick Ingles from Local Projects in Kansas Department of Transportation. And I think he would suggest that the federal government didn't close the Wilson Bridge, that Dickinson County actually did that. And in my conversation with him on the cost of inspections, as John was describing, he did mention the $20,000 figure. But if you add up the annual inspections that John presented, he's suggesting you'll be spending $4 million a year inspecting bridges. The $20,000 figures that Mick gave me said that would be to inspect a bridge like the Minnesota Bridge. I happened to be on site when the Wilson Bridge was inspected, and he was there for less than an hour. And I suggested that to Mick, and he said, yes, that type of bridge is an inspection of maybe an hour or two. John gave you three options. I'd like to suggest that there might be a fourth, be something you consider, and that's the rehabilitation of the bridge, so that it can be used for traffic with a three-ton weight limit. First, let me talk to the idea of replacing the historic Wilson Bridge. You've heard the cost associated with that. This bridge is rated at five vehicles a day. There are four mud roads that lead to the access of that bridge. With regard for the need for that bridge for farm machinery, I know of only three landowners that farm on both sides of the creek. I have a landowner that farm on both sides of the creek on the south of the creek, on the bridge. And I have no difficulty and haven't found any problem of being able to manage without using that bridge for farm machinery. In fact, I would suggest that bridge hasn't been used for farm machinery for over 60 years. When the county originally made the decision to rebuild, to build new bridges, it's the Suttonville Bridge and the Schwab Bridge on 3300 Avenue, and said, we'll leave this bridge for its historic purposes. So I don't believe it is necessary as a bridge for farm machinery, but I think it would be important to maintain for traffic. And I do believe it's, would be an unnecessary expenditure for us taxpayers, is what we just heard, up to a million dollars. Dickinson County has one of the most important, if not the most significant heritage as any of the place in the country. All I have to do is look out one of our windows and you'll see historic structures. Both the citizens in the county and the county government have made a strong commitment to conserving their heritage. And this county did that again in 2008, when it made the decision to place the oldest bridge in Dickinson County on the national and state historic registers. to place the oldest bridge in Dickinson County on the national and state historic registers. The Wilson Bridge is isolated and as I said, will need to be replaced, but I think that also makes it a prime candidate for historic preservation. Does historic preservation cost? Yes, but it doesn't cost as much as the alternatives. You've heard the alternatives today. So I would suggest it's premature to declare that there are no feasible or prudent alternatives to demolition or closure. Appreciate the chairman's comment, it won't be demolished. And I'm certainly no expert, but I've had conversations with bridge preservation organizations and individuals within state government that suggest that there's a large number of trust bridges that have been restored, can be restored. And I know the county has received information on who those experts are and what those organizations are and we know they would be glad to assist the county in reviewing the feasibility, both in terms of engineering feasibility, but financial support to maintain the historic bridge at 3200 Avenue as a bridge that can be used for light vehicle traffic. If the county's concerned about the liability of bridge failure from someone exceeding the three-ton limit, again, I would suggest maybe you do some checking like I did, Kansas League of Municipalities, Department of Transportation, other attorney resources. And I think you'll be made aware that that shouldn't be an issue because there are ways to preserve that three-ton limit that are not all that expensive. So I would suggest the county continue its commitment to maintaining and preserving the historic Wilson Bridge as it's done for over 60 years and that we maintain it with a three-ton limit for light vehicle traffic. Finally, if it's necessary because of the action of this commission, I do request to be a consulting party during the consultation process under Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act.
Thank you, Clark. Anybody else have any comments, discussion? Yes, Wally.
Yeah, Wally, well, 1724, 3100 Avenue. I kind of keyed on, on Paul's comments and I would only suggest that as we go downrange, and I'm really sensitive to the vacating the road, I'm sure you folks have dealt with that a lot. We keep vacating roads and vacating roads, yes, there is a cost, there is a certain cost to doing that, but as we vacate more roads, it's right what he said, we gotta find an alternate avenue to get the shortest distance between two points, especially in a fire. But as we've heard, counties in the West have gone to a grid system because of several factors. Money's a big one. And I would hope that we would look out far enough that we wouldn't get guided into something that we didn't look at long range and our grid system really isn't gonna be what we maybe wanted to be and that may be down the road for Dickinson County, but as we are looking out and planning in the future to look at that, if we did have to go to that and as we look at closing or vacating more roads, we're gonna be dictated to of what roads, and all of a sudden now we're, we're back to the crisis mode is, we really didn't want it that way, but we were pushed into that corner. So I would, I would only recommend or suggest that we look at that on the vacating the roads down the road and because we have a bridge closure, you know, then we look at, well, do we really need the road there if we close the bridge? So I would, I would appreciate if we would take that into consideration up the road. Thank you.
Thank you, Wally. Anybody else have any comments? If not, the hearing is over, we'll go back to the regular meeting. Thank you for coming. If you haven't signed in, appreciate it. We're only max taken today.
Brad, for the benefit of the people that are here, our chairman's mentioned there wouldn't be any action taken today, but how informational wise, how can they be kept in the loop as far as what our discussions are, plans?
By our website, we'll keep everything up there on the county website.
Thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations on your youngest son. I'm so excited.
She was pretty good, pretty good. She was... I made a new call, plenty of us didn't want to attend that.
No, I won't be going, I'm gonna get...
Congratulations.
I can't either.
Much regret.
Clark, thank you.
Jefferson Communications, got a deal for National Government Month, April 15. I've also printed off again the Chisum Trail Celebration, their kickoff is Wednesday, February 25th at 7:00 PM at Pacific Center. We all got the luncheon from the OKKC, OCCK, February 24th luncheon there and then we got our county KDOT, NATO newsletter, so that's all of the, no communications. There's no introduction, consideration, resolution, no unfinished business and no other business. Oliver, entertaining motion to adjourn.
I mean, we adjourn.
Second.
The motion is second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. We stand adjourned.